Streetlight expenditure.
So it will take down our reserves?
Yes.
Our general fund reserves.
Will reduce.
So it's gonna come from the general fund reserve?
Yes.
And be expensed out to the streets and that?
Mm-hmm.
Whoever made the motion, are you?
We need a motion for the budget adjustment.
Yeah, that's what, do you want to add that as a friendly motion or you want to add a separate?
A separate.
Okay. It's like putting the cart before the horse.
Okay, we need that motion.
Need a motion for?
Well, we can't have two motions on them.
Do we have the other one?
We already have the motion.
You already have the other one for the lights.
Okay.
So are you guys okay? Tammy, are you okay? Make a, and then having the motion later, because according to the rules, it has to be.
You made your motion, but you haven't voted on your, your lights.
I know, I know.
Yep.
But I can't have two motions on the table at the same time.
Well, just do the lights and then do the budget adjustment.
Huh? What?
Just do the lights and then the budget adjustment.
Okay, we can do that, just so that in the lights, it's, it's adjusted to that, it comes out of the street. Street, you know?
That's what the second motion will be.
Huh?
That's what the second motion will be.
Okay, if you're okay with that, huh? Okay, any more discussion on the lights, approving the lights? Okay. Pete votes yes. Norris?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Cory?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
So the lights are going into the property.
So we'll make a motion for a budget adjustment to, to take the money out of the general fund going to the streets and whatever you said.
Got it.
And I'll?
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. So you want to read that one back?
We made a motion so that the budget adjustment will come out of the general fund reserves and it'll go to the streets.
The bu- bu- budget adjustment for the lighting on the street project, right?
Mm-hmm, yep, for the streetlights.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Norris, how do you vote?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Cory?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Pete, yes. Okay, the long-waited quotes on the?
Beer cave.
The beer cave.
They're all in.
They're all in.
Do you have any questions?
It all, it all comes together like you wanted?
Yes.
Okay.
And?
Well, so far.
What is the recommendation?
Recommendation is to go with everything that's in the packet. I only got one quote for everything. So.
Are we okay with what, just one quote at that amount?
Yep, because I had her document everyone that she called and didn't return. So, for the auditors, that suffices.
We did have two quotes for the refrigeration cooler.
Yes, SCR.
But we voted on the other one basically last time, so we would be going with Carl's and the refrigeration CSR.
The CSR?
The CSRs.
Mm-hmm.
Is who you're going with?
Yep.
And then decide the concrete, meaning electric.
Yes.
And it sounds like plumbing, basically, even though it said plumbing, electrical wasn't included in the hookup of the cooler. When I called Carl's and they said the plumbing is included.
Okay. So that tone quote is someplace in all our pages, right?
Right there.
In your novel?
Right here, okay. Okay, now my, any questions of Vicky?
Wouldn't it, can they start?
Um, I don't know, I have to wait until we find out. I haven't get approval first to find out when they can start.
Okay, but this summer?
Cooler could easily be eight weeks before, if they can even have it made and brought out.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure Dean will be able to start the construction part right away. I'm not sure about my, all the concrete part when they're gonna be able to start, but it sounds like they're gonna be able to do it fairly soon. The first thing I gotta do is get the cooler ordered, because if it's eight weeks out, I bet eight weeks to get the construction done, so.
Okay.
Questions, any other councilmen? I, I have one question. Uh, are you gonna be saving or how do we recoup that money? Do you think more sales, or are you getting a better price on the?
I don't think we'll, we'll be able to do more in the store, I mean, as far as having stuff, but it's, it's just basically our sales are up and we can't keep up.
Oh, well, that's what I meant.
Products every week, because I don't have enough in the store.
Okay.
Right.
In the store, so.
So, so.
We're losing sales now.
You're losing sales, so you're gonna be able to?
All the warm beer.
Be able to have more product in the store.
Okay.
So we'll have more room for it.
And that'll in- increase customers?
That will increase customers.
And are you getting any break on the amount you can purchase with this type of thing, because?
I already do pretty big deals, but on some, yes, we will make more profit on some of the stuff.
Because that's why we?
Downsize because of the seltzer freeze.
Yeah.
We lost three doors of craft beers.
Okay.
So I wanna bring back in a couple doors of craft beers, plus the ready-to-drink things are like the biggest things right now.
Okay.
In my ready-to-drinks, our profit level on our ready-to-drinks is almost 10% more than our beer drinks.
Well, see, that's what I wanna hear.
Profit on the liquor that we put in the cooler doors and the other beer that's in there.
Huh.
So, and we're making more money by selling the liquor-based drinks over the beer.
Because that's why we gave you the addition before, is because you could get better deals, because?
And we gotta make, we're buying 300 case buys.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You gotta have them to put them somewhere.
Yes, and that's what I'm asking.
Yes, yep.
And that, that, that confirms my vote on that, so. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go with the bids.
So move.
And it'll come out of the liquor store fund?
It'll come out of their reserve.
Huh?
It'll spend down their reserve.
The liquor store reserve?
Yeah.
And that should be part of the motion, so that we don't end up with the same thing on the lights, so.
And the motion was by?
Me.
Norris.
Norris and second?
That'd be for the?
Second was me.
CSR bid and then the all-day concrete and granite ledge electric.
Any further discussion? I'll have you read that motion back, Tammy.
Was it really one?
Yeah!
There's a motion by Norris?
Huh?
Yeah, right. It was a motion by Norris, second by Lindsay, they'll spend down reserves for the beer cave quotes for S- or CSR for the 114 710, all-day concrete and granite ledge.
Okay. Any further discussion? Norris, how do you vote?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Cory?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Pete, yes. Uh, planning commission, no meeting, fire Jesse, you're up.
There it is. I liked how much today, except we had an outstanding golf tournament. It was great, and we did very well for our relief fund, so I wanna thank Pete and everybody that helped out, Vicky, and it was a great event. And we have been trying out our, because we're gonna buy new extrication tools, so we tried out our first set Monday night, we're gonna have three more demos, and I wanna make a decision which brands we're gonna buy.
Okay.
How much did you guys raise?
A bunch.
Okay.
Okay, airport. Uh, the only thing on the airport is, uh, we have an offer to sell the building, that used to be the Judd property, that hangar that's over on there, we bought that property, and, right?
Right, and there's a hangar on there that we currently rent out, but the renter left, so then John contacted the rest of them on the list, and the one, he said, I wanna buy the building. So that's why I wanted to add this to council tonight, um, looking at our book value, it's at 16,5. So, the valuation of the building originally was 20,000. So then I had John go out and take a look to see how much a building of that size would cost, and a building of that size is, is about $28,000 to build it, in today's prices.
Okay, now, there's water, there's a well and everything there too?
This is just a building, it's just a building, his plan is to buy the building and then move it to a different lot.
Oh.
At the airport.
Oh, that's what he's gonna do?
That's what he'd like to do, yes.
Okay, and then he'll be leased in that different lot?
Yep, he'll have a lot leased then, and then he'll have to pay taxes on that building.
Okay, on that lease. And right now, we own the building and the land.
We own the building, the land is not for sale.
No, I know.
But just the building.
Okay.
If council chooses to sell it instead of price.
And he's okay with that price, say, you agree?
I'm bringing that price to you guys, if that's where you think it would, at least a starting point.
The 16,5?
Mm-hmm.
How much is it being leased for, or when it was being leased?
$200 a month.
A month?
A month.
Oh, the building.
The building.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Was being leased for that?
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's what everybody out there pays, a lease?
We only have two of them out there that we own, so.
Okay. But, but, all the people at the airport pay a yearly?
Lot lease.
Lot lease?
$475.
Okay, and then, so he, he'll be paying that on what he, where he?
Where he moves it to, correct.
And it's at his expense to move it and establish it?
Yes, yes.
And the, the lot where this sits now, that, that'll be just a vacant?
It'll be vacant, mm-hmm.
And then, he'll have to go through the billing officials to get it?
Oh, yeah.
Moved and all that?
Yeah, I mean, all the, when he puts his concrete and footings?
Yeah.
Whatever he needs to put in there.
So he'll have some permits there too, you know?
Do you want a motion for that?
Can I make a comment on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, I know it is part of the airports, um, plan down the road to use that land for something else, so?
Yeah.
You know, down the road, right now, we're anticipating having to move that building ourselves or pay to have it moved, so, and it isn't, I'm?
It's not in the best shape.
It's a, it's a building in rough shape, so having somebody else move it would be?
Is it gonna be movable?
Yeah.
Yeah, it can be.
Do you want a motion?
Yeah.
To sell it for 16,5, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on? Lindsay, how do you vote?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Pete, yes. Norris, yes. I mean Norris. Most encouraged. I was trying to think where I ended up last time, and with all the discussions. Okay. Committees, economic, uh, development, parking lot.
So it's two lots up the?
So it's the same price per lot?
Yep.
Okay, so we purchased them for 35,509.75.
35,000.
Mm-hmm, and then we did improvements to the land, removed all the concrete.
Yeah.
That was 39,669.77. We have 75,179 and 52 cents into the property.
75,000?
Yes.
Uh, I understand that Corintainer's, Dave's, uh, son is in town and has a business in the old recce building.
That I didn't know.
Huh?
He has a, it's a silent partner.
What?
It's a silent partner.
Yeah, he's a silent partner, but it, it's a, it's the same co- co- company that Dave used to be with, right? It's called?
Same thing, they make the same thing.
Yeah, they make the same thing and everything that Dave did.
He can't own it.
Huh?
He can't own it.
Dave Tanner, the kid?
Both of them, I would understand, so.
Yeah, with the?
Jim Dofflin actually is the owner.
Who is?
Jim Dofflin.
Okay.
Their manager or whatever, but, yeah.
Okay.
Something of that.
Because they're doing the same business that they did at Corintainer in one of the recce buildings, which I found interesting then, when I found that out. Okay, do we wanna set a price?
We have to set a price.
Yeah.
EDC's waiting, so.
So if we got 75,000, I think we should at least recoup our price, or do we wanna set it on depending on what they build, like we used to?
Well, we, we approve the?
The business subsidy.
The business subsidy plan, so we have that plan in place, so whatever we set is flexible.
Is flexible.
Yeah, we built that all in, so we have a policy, so we can do this kind of thing. I don't, 75,000's really high, but.
But then, would, won't that go down because of?
So you need to figure out the price per lot.
75 for the two.
For the two.
Yeah. One is a little bigger than the other, so.
But what you're saying, no matter what price we set, we have a plan that if they have so many employees, they could put cheaper, right?
No.
No.
We could say that, we have the option of doing those kind of things.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but it's not like it's a done deal.
No, I know.
Yeah. So what's the proximate acreage on these?
It's like 6.5 acres for all of it, and the parcels. Let's see, so parcel, the first parcel A is 1.088 acres, the second parcel is 1.310 acres.
I'm waiting.
Waiting for what?
That, if we're gonna set a price, what is your suggestion?
Does commercial land typically, is it typically more or less than like residential building lots?
More.
Because I, I mean, aren't buildable lots in Malacca going for $35,000 apiece? Or, yeah, or more?
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know that 75,000 for two one-acre lots is an exorbitant amount of money.
Well, you'd have to put a price on each lot.
Right.
And one's a little bigger, so it'd be off a little bit.
You wanna keep in mind, you have some negotiating room too, because they're gonna wanna negotiate it down.
Right.
Depending on the business, like Dave said.
And each of these would be, what, five, five times the size of a typical residential lot?
Right.
Yeah, they're huge.
Or more, six.
An acre in town is a lot of land.
And then this has water and sewer readily accessible, there's?
Yep, everything's there.
Have we had them assessed?
No, we, I came to council one other time to have them appraised, and we didn't wanna spend the money on the appraisal.
I guess I really don't know what the value is of a commercial lot, uh, would be in our community, so. Now, is there any other information as to what, um, maybe a comparable would be, or, uh, you know, just some other information on it?
What did we sell the last ones for, do you remember?
Um, they were all sold individually by their tax value.
By the tax value?
Mm-hmm, and this is valued at like 26,000.
At the tax value?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
But remember, it's also bringing business to the city.
Right, we're gonna recover the money and, in the?
In the future.
Fact of having the business in there, we're not gonna recover it on the same.
And having people come in and live in here, you know?
Right.
It's an industrial park, which usually goes a little bit cheaper than. That's why I said, we at least have to recoup our money. What if we set both of them at 75,000, or is that way too high?
Would that be high?
That's crazy high.
Okay, I'm just saying, nobody else came up with this suggestion?
Well, I was thinking more like 40, 30.
I was too.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I've been waiting for.
Or 30, 35 and 40?
Yeah.
Then it'd be a break even. Yeah, and then it just gives us a number to start with, yeah.
35 and 40?
I'll, I'll entertain a motion if you're willing to make it, Mr. Dill.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
30, I just want a clarification, 35,000 for parcel A, which is the 1.088?
Yep.
And parcel B would be 40,000 for the?
1.3.
Yeah, the 1.3, yep, acres, okay. Dave Dillon? Who's the motion, and who was the second?
Checking that.
Further discussion? I said, what, you last time, Dave?
Uh, no.
No, Norris was last, so, uh, Norris, how do you vote?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
An aye, yes. Okay, um, personnel committee meets, met on July 14th, uh, and Jessica and Tammy presented the personnel committee, some information that we are gonna look over, did you send it out to any of the council members yet?
No.
Okay.
Did you want that sent?
Well, what do you think, Dave, on that, because we're gonna have to sit down?
It'd be nice to have the, the names, see how we fit first, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's always decided at the meeting that we would plot everybody in.
Yeah.
First.
And, and then I?
And then we were gonna meet again.
Yeah, okay. Uh, and, and there might be, have to be some adjustments on some of them on there, so I think we should set up, but, but what we did is we, uh, set up, uh?
The step. Yep, with the step plan.
A step plan, like, like we've been trying to do for two years. We spent a good time yesterday setting up the, those step plans, so when that's all finished, then it'll come, but we hope to have it finished so that when Tammy and Jessica start working on the budget, because it, it's gonna provide, uh, more stability in the, uh, budget, but the first one might be a little bit more cost, costly, and that's because, uh, to get all the employees right where they belong and what they deserve, uh, there might be some more than abnormal, uh, money spent on, on, uh, wages and unemployment employees next year. Unless the county gives the whole of us, no, no, nevermind. Uh, budget committee, that you're meeting in a couple days?
Monday.
Okay. And, uh?
Yeah.
When are we setting up another personnel committee meeting to? Can I have the budget, or?
No, it'll be sooner than that.
Yeah.
We wanna get that, as soon as Jessica can get it done.
No, after the budget committee, after they meet on the 19th.
Oh, you mean a council meeting?
No.
For the budget? Oh.
A personnel committee.
I'll check with Jessica and see?
We, we?
How long it's gonna take her to pop all that in.
Pass it, get that in there, and maybe we should be making some comments on that? Or Dave, have you, anything more to Jessica?
No, I was fine with what she presented.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Okay, so the budget committee's meeting on the 19th, will you have the input from, or you're getting the input from the budget committee on?
Yeah, on everything there.
Okay. Uh, the Veterans Memorial Design and Pay Request Number One, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
And that's the first pay, uh, any questions on that? Okay, Lindsay, how do you vote?
Yes.
Cory?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Pete, yes. Norris?
Aye.
A report on Tim, they will be having some more expense coming in, uh, Gary Judd is getting a quote on sandblasting the, uh, tank and getting it back to its original color, and they also are gonna sandblast a mo- one other thing?
Oh, Gary hurt me, not Gud.
Huh?
They're coming next Wednesday to sandblast that.
Oh, he told me Gary Judd! Huh?
No, yeah, they're coming next Wednesday to sandblast the tank and the mortar thing at the?
Did you get, did, did you get a price on it already?
Uh, yeah, I don't remember what it was.
Oh.
I don't know what we're talking about.
Huh?
It was three, what did you say? Yeah, somewhere between three and four thousand bucks.
Okay, but, but Tim, Tim just told me this afternoon it was Gary Judd that was getting it.
You guys are all being old.
You didn't say what? It's a he?
It's the he, right?
Well, anyway, that, that, that will be added to the cost of the project, and then, the other thing he didn't know it was added to the cost of the project was the, uh, kiosk. There was a kiosk supposed to be coming.
Yeah, that'll be added to the project.
And, the, it, but he didn't know if it was already in there, I, I'm not sure, in the bid, but I don't think it was.
I don't think so.
And then the other thing that is added and was part of the project is that they have to do, they don't have bids on the flagpole. Uh, because it, right, Gary, they're put, they don't have bids on the flagpole that they're redoing with the plaques on the flagpole, the big flagpole.
Yeah, I think he's got a price on it.
I thought it was that JK Landscaping is doing that part of it.
It, it, yeah, but he didn't know if that was in the original bid or not, is it?
I thought it was.
Well, okay, but those are things that have to be checked out, because Tim wasn't able to be here tonight, so. Okay. Joint Powers Agreement. With Bram for the Building Zoning Official, continue or discontinue, I'll let you take over the discussion on that, Tammy.
Uh, can I just, uh, take a moment to thank Marshall for his years of service?
Yes.
The staff got together yesterday and we presented him with the plaque, and we, we all had pizza, we had a good time, and so I just wanted to say thank you, Marshall.
And best luck, and thank you from the council too. Okay. So, open for discussion on that?
Yeah.
Is, um?
You want me to?
What do we wanna do, because it's a joint powers, and you got a report from their July 1st meeting in there?
Yeah, the City of Bram elected to dissolve the Joint Powers Board at their meeting. The contract calls for a resolution to dissolve it, which Angie didn't realize, so they're gonna do their resolution at their August, their first meeting in August. And the attorney had prepared, our city attorney prepared the resolution, uh, for the joint powers, being that we know Bram's wishes for the withdrawal from the Joint Powers Agreement between the City of Malacca and Bram for the appointment of a building official, this resolution has been pared, repaired, repaired by the city attorney.
This one here?
Yes.
And do I have one in my console?
No, because this was after your packets went out.
Okay, so, okay.
You should have an original in your signature pile there.
That's what I'm asking.
Yep.
Okay, so there's the original in there. So I think the first thing to do is to pass this resolution. And I'm asking for a motion to take, um, Resolution Number 2. uh, to take, um, Resolution Number Twenty-One Thirty-Nine, declaring it's withdrawal. Uh, it's withdrawal, shouldn't it say Malacca?
It does down below.
Okay, it's withdrawal from the Joint Powers Agreement between the Cities of Malacca and Bram for employment of the building official.
I'll move for approval.
A second.
And this is effective when?
Um, this will be effective for this council meeting as of this date.
So what do we do for the next twelve days that Marshall's still here?
He's still under his contract until July twenty-fifth.
He's under contract with the powers.
Mm-hmm.
So if we've done away with the powers, shouldn't it say his last day of employment?
Then you can change the amendment of the resolution to be adopted by ineffective on July twenty-fifth.
Yeah, I think it is.
You gotta wait, you gotta wait for Bram anyhow.
No, they can do theirs separate, too.
I know, but they haven't done theirs.
They haven't done theirs yet.
But by our resolution, the effective date should be-
Can I amend the motion to make the effective date July twenty-fifth?
Twenty-seventh, is it?
Twenty-fifth. Marshall, that's your last day, right? Twenty-fifth?
Yes.
Okay, have an amendment to the motion by Norris, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that amendment? Cory, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Pete, yes? Norris?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Amendment passes. Now, on, we have a Resolution Twenty-One Thirty-Nine as amended. Uh, any discussion on that? Hearing no discussion, Dave, how do you vote?
Aye.
Pete, yes? Norris?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Motion passes. So, what are we doing after the twenty-fifth is the next question of discussion?
Well, in your packet, you've got some options.
It, 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 one of the options here that you had at your meeting, Tammy, and I don't understand it, said the city took on the zoning duties, it would require the city clerk to be assisting in the zoning duties and hire a new billing clerk. I, I don't understand that. It's in your minutes from the July first meeting.
Oh, from the July first.
You say half said, if the city took on the zoning duties, it would require the city clerk
Yep, it would-
To be assisting in the zoning duties and to hire a new bill, bill, billing clerk.
Mm-hmm.
I don't understand that comment.
Because there'd be a switch in the zoning.
There'd be a switch in the zoning?
Yep.
But then you're hiring a new billing clerk because somebody else is doing the zoning?
Yeah, but be between, if I were to take it on, I would also have, um, Dolores in that administrative role as well.
But you, there's taken on, so we're not hiring a new person if we do that?
Yeah, cause she couldn't be able to do everything.
Would that be a full-time person?
No, it wouldn't have to be.
Wow.
That's some discussion I think we need to have down the road, try to figure out where we're gonna go.
Well, I, I was just complex by that statement. Okay.
As far as zoning, my recommendation would be to, you could do both of the RFPs and you could also place an ad for a zoning administrator for a part-time position.
Okay.
If you do them both, the council can decide which way they wanna go, or the personnel, and figure out which way we wanna go with that.
It'd be a council decision at the recommendation of Personnel Committee.
If you go with an RFP, that gives you lots of options to look at the firms, and I did get an email from, um, from Phil, that their company also does planning and zoning services.
So we could have, we could have their firm do the planning and zoning.
And engineering.
And engineering.
Yep.
And we could have another person contract for the building inspection.
Correct. Yep. One is professional services, which would be the building official, and the other one is a consulting service. You don't have to go out for an RFP for the zoning, but it makes the companies very competitive when you do.
What do you mean, makes what companies?
Uh, well, let's see, Bolton Mink and Stan Tech wanna put in their request for proposal. Their prices range between one hundred and sixty, they're gonna become very competitive with their RFP to try to get the consulting service.
Where, okay, I, I like, what, what's the council think on those two options?
Do you have enough time to do an RFP with that?
Yeah, I've got that template, so we can throw that out there tomorrow.
Okay.
And give it about three weeks.
I would certainly be interested to see what Stan Tech has.
Exactly.
Cause they've been so good to work with.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I, I'm, uh, impressed if, if the other one that did the County Street Project, you know, don't-
Don't go there?
No.
Yeah.
To the same extent, another question comes in mind. Uh, has, um, the Cities of Peas and Forston been aware of this?
Yep, I've been in contact with both, I've talked with both of them.
How does that work with them? Do they have to do a separate one?
They'd have to contract with an individual like Tad or someone else.
So they'd have to set up their own contract, it would not be through the City of Malacca?
Not anymore.
And, and they're aware, both cities are aware of this?
Yes.
Okay.
Talked with both of them.
Cause, cause I was surprised that the, uh, Planning Commission members weren't aware of this resignation of Marshall.
Well, they were. Marshall let them know.
I, I just talked to one the other day and she didn't know anything about it.
Okay.
So I, I was surprised.
Okay, well.
That they, they, that they weren't informed of this decision. So, but Pete, Pete's a back and been the form.
Yes.
And how, how about on the other end, what the joint powers are, are we gonna let? Has the joint powers letting?
Angie will take care of that other side.
The other side.
And then we'll have to, um, I've got hold of the insurance company to cancel the property casualty liability and work comp insurance. And then we'll have to sell the vehicle. So we'll have to, both cities will probably have to place an ad in their papers with the pictures and all the information of the vehicles, and then we'll give a deadline on both cities to, all those bids can come in, and then Norris and I and Angie and Tish will get together and we'll open those bids in one city or the other.
Can one city buy the vehicle from the other?
Absolutely.
That's what I'm saying.
Uh, Marshall got me some book values and the vehicles are, right, about fourteen to fifteen thousand dollars. It's the book value.
It's the book value?
Mm-hmm.
So if you go by book value, and Bram said they'd like to purchase the our half of the car, or if we'd say we wanna purchase the half of the car, but we have no use for it?
Well, we paid twenty-four thousand for it.
I know.
So, they might say something different, that their value or something would be different, but I would suggest you go off for the sealed bids first and not deal with-
Used, used car prices.
Yeah, I talked with Angie about it too, and she said it sounds like a good plan to me.
And, and, and that's not a decision of the council, that's a decision of the Joint Board, cause they own that vehicle.
Correct, yep.
So.
So, and she's gonna be on vacation for a little bit here, so that will take like a week or so before she's back. So I'm preparing the ad and the bid docs, so we'll get all that ready, send it over to her and Norris and Tish and
Okay.
We'll go from there.
Okay, any other questions on things that can happen or will happen or if are happening, neat? So what's the desire of the board to have Tammy do?
Do you want a motion, or are we just?
We're gonna have to have a motion for her to do it.
Ken, I'll make a motion to put out an RFP for the services.
Services for building?
Zoning.
Zoning, yep.
For zoning.
For zoning.
I'll second that.
So all we're, all we're working with is, on this motion, is the zoning part of it?
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion on the zoning part of it? Dave, how do you vote?
Aye.
Pete, yes? Norris?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we need a motion to enter into a contract with somebody for building inspection, is this to the desire of the council?
That'd be mine, mine.
I'm just asking. Are we entering into the contract that's in front of us and coming up with something, or are we gonna have to have another meeting on that?
Well, Norris and I had met with, with Tad, and, um, we kinda went over a lot of questions. You know, and told him that he'd understand, have to understand some of the zoning, so that he would know the setbacks and things like that. And also that he would be responsible for code enforcement as well, so, and he was very willing to do all that, so.
And that is, I thought it was in here.
It is. Mid Min?
I'm not seeing, you got it, please. That, that's fine. I, I, I've read it and that, and I, I see what it is, but any other questions on that?
Norris, Norris, you were good?
Yeah, oh, definitely, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I think it would be a good, fairly easy, painless transition and, and, uh, it'd be a good, good route to go. And then the, the city is, yeah, we really have essentially no risk. I mean, we, we just get forty percent of the permit costs and if there's a lot of them, we get a lot, if there's none, none.
Good.
We're not out any, any expense.
And, and, and the thing in front of you that, is this little piece of paper? Tammy made up today at my request on what it would have cost us or what revenue we would have had come in? Is that correct? So, based on the forty percent, Tammy?
Uh, sixty percent.
No, no, sixty percent.
Yeah, but the sixty-forty is what-
And, but the sixty is?
The sixty percent is what's calculated there.
Sixty for what?
His contracted fee.
Yes, I know.
Yeah, so the-
But what, what, what would the forty percent be?
The remaining is forty percent.
Yes, that's what I wanna know. So city main revenue would have been this, for this year, would have been revenue.
That's what it would have looked like for the first six months.
Yeah. So, so roughly about sixteen thousand, seventeen thousand would have went into the general fund without any expenses coming out.
Well, it might, might be a little bit of staff time.
Some staff, I mean, that's just-
Yeah, but-
Just people will come in to pick up a permit.
But that's no different than what happens now.
And your zoning, though.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Or your zoning's gonna cost you.
Yeah, that's what was my next question.
Six months is sixteen thousand, you ain't gonna pay for it, I'll tell you that.
Right.
It won't pay for zoning.
What, this?
The sixteen thousand.
Depends on how many conditional use permits or variances, or?
Well, according to Marshall, that's sixteen thousand, so are we out of line on the sixty-forty if he's not doing zoning?
That's kind of a standard rate with them.
Well, you know, right now with your other cities, you have, you're taking seventy percent. You're not doing zoning on those other cities.
Yeah, we're getting like, uh, with Forston and, and Peas, the city's keeping
Seventy.
Seventy percent plus a hundred percent on plan reviews, so he's, so we're, yeah, he's, he, that's a very good offer for him to do it for sixty and sixty.
No, that, not-
No, for, we're providing the same service to Peas and Forston, but we're getting seventy percent of the permit cost plus a hundred percent of the plan review.
Oh.
And, and he's doing it for sixty and sixty.
Sixty.
So.
But, but in essence, what Marshall's saying is we'd be losing money on the zoning part.
That's, that's a-
And whereas now in the joint powers, we're not losing money.
Well, when there's enough activity, yeah. And with-
So how, how, how do we budget for a loss in an expense in the zoning?
How do you budget for a loss? Well, you're gonna have-
Same way we budgeted for losses in zoning before, yeah.
Okay.
We did it before, yep. There were years when, when there was, there was a loss there.
But I, I, I would, really, for the whole two jobs, I would make sure the city wasn't paying out money for the two jobs and revenue not coming in, cause if we had a bad year, I don't know.
And building permits, well.
Well, if it's a slow year for building, it's gonna be a slow year for planning, too.
Isn't there a cost savings by not having a employee that does that job? Like, as part of our budget?
Health insurance and-
Huh?
And benefits package.
And PERA, all that side of it is a saving, and vacation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And insurance and and, and you have to have a qualified person. That's why that comment of Tammy's that I read earlier kinda struck me the wrong way, maybe. So, okay. So we already putting that out, so, uh, the zoning, so i- i- if that comes back in too high, we can say no. And so now we're, uh, the motion on the floor is to go with Mid Minnesota Inspection LLC. And they, they have agreed to this, or this is what you're gonna present them?
This is their proposal.
Yeah, this is what he presented.
This is what, and you're comfortable with what was presented here, Norris?
Yep.
Okay, I have to read, no, is the council comfortable, or any questions of Norris and Tammy on this agreement? And we have a motion on the floor already on it, to accept it, right?
No, you don't. You have a motion for the RFP, but not for this.
We already passed our RFP.
Right, but you don't have one for this.
I'll make a motion that we accept this proposal from Mid Minnesota Inspections for building inspection services and code enforcement.
And starting?
Starting, uh, July twenty-fifth.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Norris, how do you vote?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Uh, Cory?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Pete, yes? Okay.
There will be a little transition time, too, because of the projects in the works, uh, so the joint- So the joint powers will have to figure out a way to.
Yeah, we'll be having meetings to try to.
Yeah, on projects.
But.
After July twenty-fifth.
Is that a decision of joint powers or is that a decision of our council? Cause after twenty-fifth, the joint powers no longer exist, so they can't be making any decisions after the twenty-fifth.
Yep.
So that's gonna have to be worked out.
So I'd have to come to the council then.
Yeah, so they have to come to the council.
But it's gonna take.
It'll take the two to get everything sorted out.
It, 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 yes, it'll be a decision between the Bram Council and the city council on how those fees on after the twenty-fifth are in. Because the joint powers does not exist after the twenty-fifth, correct?
Correct.
Tammy?
Correct.
Okay. I'm just wondering. Okay.
What else we got here?
So we're down to D. Underneath terrorism. Oh, that's, why did that get put under joint power? Oh, that's a joint power. The next thing underneath the joint powers is terrorism and our next meeting is July twenty-ninth at five o'clock. Unfinished business, Fairview update. Not a whole lot to report since our last meeting. Let's see, do you wanna report on the stakeholders and Fairview setting up that, oh, we brought up the V G R X at the last meeting. So there's really no new news on anything as far as the stakeholders and Fairview at this time.
Still moving forward.
New business, special event, movies in the park. I'll entertain a motion. Who are that? Move for approval?
Second.
That is through the chamber, correct?
Movies in the park?
Yeah.
No, that's us.
That's us, cause Jordan was on there, that's why the organization named Jordan was on there and that's why I was wondering.
Him and Mary are organizing it.
Okay, so it's a city event, right?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Any more discussion on it? Lindsay?
Is that free, free to the public then?
Yeah.
Bring your own chair or.
Bring your own chair and popcorn. Right, Mary?
Popcorn? I thought you were furnishing it. No, never mind what you were furnishing. Lindsay, how do you vote?
Yes.
Cory?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Pete, yes. Norris?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, special event. Travis Peterson Concert Fundraiser eight twenty-four twenty-one. I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
What is this a fundraiser for?
High school band? Band?
Concert.
Okay, then here's, here's my, if they're charging for it.
It's free will donation.
Huh?
It's a free will donation.
Okay, so do they get charged for usage of the band shell? Cause if you go to the school and you have a fundraiser there, you get charged. So do we rent out the band shell and do they have to pay the fees for the band shell? And that same question's gonna come up for that homegrown music. Yes?
Um, they've already dropped off the fees for rental of the band shell. So we did rent it to them for money, they're not getting it for free.
They're not?
No.
But they dropped off fifty? Oh, that wasn't them. It was somebody, a liquor license, never mind. That was on the other one. So they paid?
They both have paid to rent a band shell on the dates requested.
They did?
Yes.
Okay, so then I'm okay, as long as they have paid.
Park shelter.
Huh? Okay, any other questions? Did we get a motion?
We did.
Okay. Cory, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Pete, yes. Norris?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Motion carries. Liquor license for, I don't have that. Oh, I don't, I don't have the Timber Valley one.
Yep.
So I thought, oh, it's out of order of. It's out of the order of the Initiative Foundation. Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the liquor license on that.
So moved.
I'll second.
Oh, it's not only for the liquor license, it's also for the event, isn't it? Have we had a event for that yet?
Matty Bronze?
Yeah.
Yeah, they did it before.
Oh, they did it before? Okay, my same question on that. So all we're approving tonight is the special event permit for homegrown plus a liquor license to Timber Valley, correct?
Correct.
Okay, did they pay?
It says right on the bottom.
Huh?
It says it right on the bottom.
They only paid fifty dollars for the?
He's only paying for the liquor license.
Huh?
That's for the liquor.
That's for the liquor license.
Yeah, but did they pay for the event? Cause they're charging to that event.
Didn't you say they did? Yeah, she said they did.
For renting the band shell and the whole part?
Said both of them.
Yep.
Okay, okay. Okay, and did we get a motion?
Yes, we did.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. No, I mean.
Nope.
Dave, how do you vote?
Aye.
Pete, yes. And Norris?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Okay. Oh, now the Timber Valley is on the backside. So is that a separate one?
It's just out of order.
Huh?
It's just out of order.
You just have to go back to for the homegrown one.
So we just did the homegrown or did we do the liquor license?
Liquor license.
Okay, okay.
They're just out of.
There, there, that's why they're out of order. So now I'll entertain a motion for the special event for the Malacca Homegrown.
So moved.
I'll second.
Now, has that one paid the fee? That was my question.
Yes.
Okay. But why is that? Oh, that's a liquor license. I hate them when they're out of order.
That's cause they're back to back in your packet.
Okay. Okay, if they paid the fee, that's fine, cause I don't see where it was on here, so, okay. Dave, how do you vote?
Aye.
Pete, yes. Norris?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now let's go back to
Initiative.
The foundation, the Initiative Foundation allocation, three thousand one hundred dollars in the two thousand twenty budget. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Discussion on that.
What have we done in previous years?
Same amount.
Same amount.
Same amount, but is it time that, cause they give a lot to the community?
Yes, they do.
Huh? Is this what they asked for or is?
Yeah, this is what they asked for.
Are we comfortable with that or if it's been the same amount? The amount they invest back in the community and on different projects has been substantial, you know? Do we wanna do any changes on that? It's kind of.
Well, how does it compare with what other communities are asked that the Initiative Foundation gives to?
We don't know, but some of them give, and individual companies, I know the bank gives so much each year and other people in town give so much too. But if you look at it, what did it say they've given out in Malax County last year? It was on there.
One, one point seven million.
Yeah.
For the county. As well as two point six.
David, are you comfortable with that? Cause both.
I am, just because I'm just nervous about our budget. I wanna make sure.
Okay.
I don't know if this is the right time to, I mean, I would like to give them twenty thousand dollars, but I don't know that we can.
Okay.
I mean, they're the most important organization we deal with, no question.
Right.
But any, what do other cities do? Do you know? Any ideas?
As far as amounts? No, we don't. You can look in their IQ quarterly, it comes out and it'll list like five thousand dollars to ten thousand or you know, one thousand to five thousand. They give you ranges, but.
But they don't give you the exact amount?
Yeah.
I agree with you, Dave. I think with some of the stuff that we've got coming up in our next year's budget, that it might not be the right time.
Yeah, we'd like to.
Yes.
Could, could, could we send back to them that letter? And say a minimum that we will put in our budget is the three, three thousand one hundred. Wasn't that it?
Yeah, yeah.
And they're assured of that, but after our budget costs, you know, is that reasonable, Dave?
Yeah, I think we, anytime if we feel we can give them a little more, that's great, yeah.
Yeah, so should, should it, in the letter Tammy sends back, say at least we will donate that?
A minimum.
Minimum of?
Yeah, cause it's a confirmation that this is what we're gonna tell them, thirty one hundred.
At a minimum, but I'd like to add into the motion at a minimum that we will, are you guys okay with that?
Yeah, I doubt that if we sent more that they wouldn't accept.
Well, no.
Exactly.
But.
You only said thirty one hundred.
It's a response to that.
Sure.
And we'll tell them too. I mean, we talk to them all the time, so.
So. Okay, you have a motion on that to send it back?
I do.
And a minimum of thirty one hundred. Uh, Dave, how do you vote?
Aye.
Pete, yes. Norris?
Aye.
Uh, Lindsay?
Yes.
Cory?
Aye.
Okay, and I started with you. Miscellaneous. Uh, council, oh, we'll do council comments later, or do we wanna do them now?
So it's up to you.
We'll do council comments now.
Okay.
Lindsay, any comments? Cory?
I just, I know the parks was recognized already today, but they have done a fantastic job with the parks this summer. I'm out on the bike trails a lot and they're in great shape. The parks are in great shape. Rec Park is used. Like, there's tons of people down there every time I go through there, so just thanks again for the work that you guys do.
Dave?
Well, thanks, but I have a complaint because Foley's cross-country teams come over here now and running on our trails. You're helping the bad guys. But it just shows you how good they are, I mean, in that whole park, and they comment, I was with them today down there and they were commenting on how nice the park is and how it looks nice, and so that was good. And I wanna thank Marshall too for all your work. Appreciate it.
Not only at the park today, a whole bus, busload of Ogilvy kids, summer kids got off the bus today down in the park. So, and I talked to the bus driver for a while down there. The other thing, I, we need an update on that house.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, Marshall sent out a new letter, so he's got until August eleventh. And then it goes back to.
Why a new letter? I thought.
Because it's a new owner. The old resolution doesn't work for a new owner. So we have to go through that process again and then next month, a resolution will come before the council.
Okay.
Okay.
When I talked to the gentleman, he stated he doesn't want to be brought to court, so he said he would be getting, moving on.
He'd be what?
He is gonna get moving on, is what he told me.
Moving on?
Getting it tore down.
Oh, tore down?
Yes.
And not add any junk cars that are up on the jack?
He didn't, he didn't.
What an eyesore. It's been two years.
Yes.
Yeah, well, but dealing with it.
Oh, yeah, just dealing with it.
Yes. Okay, uh. Norris?
I would just like to say again, I heard so many good comments about the parks that just so many people say, wow, this is just great. It just really is nice. It's fun to see and fun to hear all the positive comments. That's exciting.
And now that Mary's gonna really get going on all these new activities down there.
New building?
Huh?
New building?
Yeah, oh, a new building moves in in about six weeks. And should we start looking at Dave's suggestion from last time of advertising the possibility?
Yeah, let's get the building up first.
Yeah, we got some information coming from some people.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we wanna make sure the building's completed.
Okay.
Before we discuss.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna go into the closed meeting portion of our meeting tonight, and then we, after the closed meeting, we will reconvene and for adjournment. So the council is now going into closed.